Welcome to tonight's town hall meeting for District Two, St. Simons. My name is Cap Fendig. I'm the Commissioner for the Islands. Up front, we have our Chairman, Mr. David O'Quinn, who was at-large Commissioner, our other at-large Commissioner, Walter Rafowski, and saw a couple of other Commissioners come in, Commissioner Bill Brunson, where are you at? And Sammy Tossen made it in. Okay, so you have a lot of Commissioners here tonight to listen. So tonight's meeting is about SPOLOST specifically. The Commission is considering a SPOLOST, so all the discussion and comments for the meeting will be about SPOLOST only. If you are here to speak to other issues at the end of the meeting, with the time after an hour for SPOLOST, we'll allow those to come up, meet with Commissioners, and talk with us. So this is about SPOLOST, projects and your comments or feelings about SPOLOST. Because of that, we are limiting it down to three minutes, so that as many of you that want to come and speak to that can. And we welcome you here tonight. We're glad you came, and thank you very much. And with that, we'll get going. All right, Dave, if you'll hit the first one. So I wanted to talk about the timelines that are we are legally obligated to meet, so that you understand the process of what is going to be going through. We're going to have a formal meeting with the city on February 15th, because SPOLOST is a split between the county and the city. There are other partners in that process, that would be the Joint Water Sewer and Jekyll Island. But the two legal entities that are involved in SPOLOST is the city and the county. We must submit the referendum request on the SPOLOST list to the Board of Elections before August the 8th. The Board of Elections will review that and call for a SPOLOST referendum on August the 10th. And then your opportunity to vote on that SPOLOST, up or down, will be at the general election November the 8th. Okay? All right, just kind of a backdrop of the last SPOLOST that we had was 2016 SPOLOST. There were 46 approved projects on that SPOLOST list, 34 completed, four are still pending right-of-way acquisitions. That means that the deal, financial deal between the owner of that property and the need for the county to gain title, clear title of that right-of-way are still outstanding. There are four right-of-ways under contract. There are two projects in the process of county approval. One project is now out for bid, and one is still in the design phase. So that kind of captures what's the 2016. Also on the table, as you go out the door, I have a pile of the 2016 report and updates specifically, so you can grab those if you want to get into the meat of the coconut, so to speak. Just a couple of things that you should understand about how SPOLOST impacts District Two. The 2016 SPOLOST provided funding to pave all of Frederica Road. It paved most of Seapalms and Glen Haven and many other subdivisions, too numerous to list on here. It provided the funding for the roundabout at King's Way and also Demery, Annie's Beach. It also paved all of Demery Road. It provides and widens sidewalks, some projects you see underway right now when you drive up and down Frederica Road, and provided numerous drainage projects. The list is too big, but that list is also in that folio in the back, if you want to get more specific. Okay? And with that, we're here to listen to you about SPOLOST. So those of you that have questions or comments or particular projects that you would like to see be considered, you please come on up to the podium and have a talk. Now, y'all got to get warmed up.
If I may, Commissioners, my name is Bill Jurashak. I've been living here for some 30-some-odd years. My wife and her family lived here before that. Hello, can you hear me? Okay. My name is Bill Jurashak. I live off North Harrington in the middle of the island, and I've been living here for some 30-some-odd years. My family, my wife's family is from Brunswick, and her father and father before him. My question to you this evening, real quick, is there seems to be a lot of pressure from the Commission to force a SPOLOST for 2022, '23. I don't understand why we need another SPOLOST if you haven't finished the projects from the previous one in 2016, and it's still ongoing. Why do we need to be taxed again, the way things are right now with inflation and whatnot? I understand the courthouse, and maybe that's what you should focus on, is the courthouse and completing that project. Outside of that, I don't see a reason. Thank you.
My name is Murray Pounds. I'm here representing the membership of Bike Walk Golden Isles, the citizens advocacy group dedicated to promoting walking, biking, and rolling in the Golden Isles. Our group strongly believes that the ability to bike, walk, or row freely in the Golden Isles area is an important aspect of everyday life in terms of people's ability to get to work and school, maintain their health, and enjoy a variety of recreation and leisure experiences. Biking, walking, and rolling are hugely important aspects of tourism industry that fuels the economy in our area, and we have some ideas about some projects that would further that along. Relative to this SPOLOST 2022 plan, here are some things we think you could include. Fund a trail system master plan for Glen County. The creation of a new trail master plan by qualified consultants reflecting the interest of current residents, along with available funding and opportunities, would allow for the advancement of biking, walking, and rowing opportunities in Glen County. A good master plan would be advantageous in addressing the next three items. First, fund and implement the findings of the planned study of the Altama Corridor to improve bicycle and pedestrian movement in Brunswick. Two, fund and complete the study of the Sea Island Road Corridor between Demery Trail system. The third one would be to fund to complete the East Coast Greenway through Glen County. Currently, our neighboring counties, McIntosh, Camden, have active projects, either in the planning stage or under construction, that will connect these communities to a trail that will proceed from Calais, Maine, to Key West, Florida. Our ability to connect to this trail would be huge, not only for our residents, but from people who would visit along the way. And these SPOLOST funds could be augmented in a very significant way through programs such as the federal RACE program, which is intended to plan, design, and build full networks of paved trails, complete streets, and related infrastructure. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
My name's Jeff Kilgore, and in my earlier business career, I spent about 11 years working for an international CPA firm. We had a saying that goes like P to the sixth power. Proper planning prevents piss-poor performance. I don't understand how you can announce that you're going to go forward with a SPOLOST referendum, and you don't even have a project list. You don't know the total amount of money that you need. And in the past, we've been plagued by poor planning and inadequate execution, and it just looks an awful lot like a repetition of the previous performance. And I would ask that you consider going to the community in maybe each of you to your own district and develop a project list that looks into the future for 25 or 30 years, and make a determination of what this community wants, in which direction is the community going in terms of emphasizing tourism, or as, and I applaud Commissioner Fendig's efforts to preserve St. Simons and the community, village aspect, whatever you want to call it, that we all grew up with. We recognize that's not possible in this day and time, but an effort to control and manage growth is certainly admirable. But if you develop a project list for the, and with a vision, you're the leaders, you're supposed to set the course, and through input from the community, and then you have a project list, and if it's 15 projects long, or if it's 50 projects long, when you have a SPOLOST, you can make a determination, you go to the community, you take the top 10 projects, and if that takes, say, $60 million, then you do a three-year SPOLOST, and you execute on those projects. But this nonsense of announcing you're going to do a five- or a six-year SPOLOST, you don't even have a project list, does not appear to me to be the proper order of things. And so, God bless you, good luck, but we'll see you down the road.
Good evening. My name's John Dowell. I've been a resident for over 40 years, and I've had the pleasure of serving on the SPOLOST Oversight Committee. Had the pleasure of working with David Austin, Paul Andrews, Andrew Burrows, and most of the city and county staff. And the one thing, and I will say this, I have my education and prior experience in government, I was the city manager, and I understand the budget process. And we always subscribe to the philosophy that you're at least one budget behind what you need to do, because the public has to see the pain before they're willing to pay for it. And SPOLOST is a unique way, and I think an incredible way, of getting things done in the county. I understand, and if you go up to that list, and when we went through the other, Jane Fraser was on that committee with me, there's an issue, which came first, the chicken or the egg? You approve a project, and you don't have the drawings, you haven't acquired the right-of-way, and you're not in a position to do it, because it's not something that the county commission has a funding source for or the approval to do. And then it becomes a, and you look at that, I think there's like eight projects remaining to be done. One's out to bid, one's going to be approved, you have a couple that are negotiating the right-of-way, and then you've got a couple that you haven't resolved the right-of-way. I think the problem, this is my personal opinion, I think the problem with SPOLOST is not so much the concept, but the items. And I know the previous SPOLOST, and again, I'm speaking for me, but for two projects, I thought it was a great list, but the two projects, and I won't mention them, they were like lightning rods. And I would not vote in favor of the SPOLOST, and in essence, throwing out the baby with the bath wash. I think what needs to be done from the county committee, my opinion, this is only my opinion, I think you need to accelerate and put together the list. And I know there's lightning rods, you got the courthouse to deal with, 20-something million dollars, and I don't know how you deal with it, but the other SPOLOST projects, whether it be roads, or parks, or whatever, I think the county commission needs, on your own, listening to groups like this, or other town hall meetings, put your list together, then have these meetings, and have people weigh in and say, we're in, we're out. I know the last SPOLOST had a group, and, but this is the group that you need to hear. And you need to hear them, you know, and I'm not going to say I think we should do this project or that project. I think that's up to you guys, because you're, you hear more. because you're, you, you hear more than any of us. But you need to get to the list and have these kind of meetings and have people weigh in. And then at the point that you have a decision, whether you please all of us, some of us, or none of us, at that point in time, that becomes what we can focus on and we can either campaign for or against. For us not to have SPOLOST, you, you raise money, taxes, fees, or bonds, and...
Mr. Dow, you're over three minutes.
All right.
Can you, any...
I have what?
Said you're over three minutes. If you can go around it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Round it.
My bottom line is, show us a list. Let us have this kind of a meeting, share it with you, and go from there. Thank you, sir.
One, one comment, uh, to your, to your comment, Mr. Dow. We will have more meetings once a list is put together. I think the, the purpose of these meetings now is to hear from the public. I mean, we're still, what, nine to ten months away from the actual vote, six months away from when we actually have to turn it in on August the eighth. But there will be more meetings as the list is being developed. But we wanted to be sure that we, we came out to the public first and said, "What's on your mind?" As, as we're gathering information. So, thank you.
Yes, sir. My name is Rod Skagleyon. Live on St. Simons, twenty-three years. Better?
Yeah, just get close to it.
All right. Some of the projects on the list from the last SPOLOST that got voted down, I thought had a lot of, in my opinion, nonessential elements on it. I don't think there are projects such as paving the beach parking lot at Coast Guard Station. It sort of cuts into the ambiance of the, of the island. And, uh, you know, over these past twenty-three years, I've seen a lot of changes, obviously. But, uh, just, you know, I, I get the courthouse. You need money to, to make it bigger, wonderful. But, um, I guess just pick the projects that are essential and all the other stuff that you throw against the wall. You know, maybe you'll have better luck next time around with the, with the vote.
Okay. Thank you.
Just one, one comment regarding the courthouse. It, it, it's essential that we do something towards providing more space, but more importantly, security. And we've got a huge issue with the juvenile court, as well as we've got several campuses spread around. So, uh, as we as a community think about this and think about the needs in the judicial system and the safety, because we all know that, that this world has changed a lot in the last ten years as to what may or may not happen, I just ask that people consider that as we talk about the courthouse.
Anybody else at this time wanna come up and comment on SPOLOST?
I'd like to add, actually, sorry, it's on St. Simons Island. But, uh, I do have a business over on Altama. I mean, you think it'd be part of the city where it's at? But it's actually, it's actually a piece of the county. And, uh, if anyone's driven on Altama Avenue, you can see the ruts from where the wheels, I mean, it's just, it's been, it's worn down. It needs to be resurfaced. Uh, okay. My name's Cody, uh, and I'm, I'm commenting on the condition of Altama Avenue. The ruts are worn into the street. I mean, it's a, it's a bumpy ride. It's, it's worn down. It's had its, its end of life. And, uh, it needs to be resurfaced. And also, I'd just like to add Haber Sham could use some attention as well. There's a lot of potholes. And then, uh, specifically coming from the high school to the end of Haber Sham, there's this huge bump that even if you're only going like twenty-five miles per hour, it'll send everything in the tailgate of your truck flying. So, thank you.
Is that in the city or the county, that part?
Where, where that, where that's cut off is this county, yes, sir. It's right across from the college. That's where I'm located. But Altama as a whole needs to be addressed.
Turn the lights up. Yeah, we came here.
All right.
Where's our T-pads?
Yeah, my name is Charlie Simmons. Can you hear me? Okay, thank you. I live at 200 Saltair Drive, Unit 156, that's Demery Landing. I've lived either on St. Simons or Sea Island for part-time or full-time for seventy-four years. Been down here a long time. I've seen a lot of, a lot of changes. And when I look at that list of accomplishments of how much we have done on St. Simons, like paving all of Frederica, paving all of Demery, putting in roundabouts, and I look, you know, they're all transportation-oriented. They're all traffic-oriented. And I look at some of the future SPOLOST projects, like for instance, uh, you know, the roundabout at Sea Island Road and whatnot. Again, that's, uh, transportation-oriented. It's like more traffic. And I look even at the courthouse and the new juvenile part of it, and I look at more traffic. And I keep wondering, why in the world are we paying for the Band-Aid when we need to be paying for a solution to all this? If you're really trying to, uh, to, to put more juveniles in jail, maybe that's a problem. And, uh, you know, I think also the fact that we're trying to be the juvenile court and courthouse for a lot of other counties also, why are we thinking that big is always better? And when I look at, for instance, like, you know, we started out as a residential community, and then we became like a long-term rental community, and now we've become a short-term rental community and more, and you've done the studies on the cars that, uh, you know, go out four, five, six times a day from some of these people that stay here a short time. If we did something about maybe making this a little bit more, maybe hard to come to or, or maybe trying to upgrade our community or doing something to where we just have less people on the dagum roads rather than building all these new roads and paving all of them. So, why don't we look at maybe, uh, instead of looking at like two or three years down the road like on a roundabout and look at it, hey, thirty years from now, do we want to actually have that overpass at Sea Island Road at Frederica? Or maybe we want to make it where we get back to being a bedroom community? Thank you.
Thank you.
Dave, will you flip over to that other? Along with you. Of course, your leaders do have visions for projects. Uh, a lot of these projects that have been put forth to committee, uh, were on that SPOLOST that was prepared for November 2020. And the previous commission decided, for a variety of reasons, to pull that list off to let new commissioners, uh, come in and, uh, implement, uh, either the size and scope or change of scope of those projects. Of course, we presented a SPOLOST in the first couple of months in March, and that was voted down. And I agree on a lot of comments that the, uh, commission has not had its act together, and I'm not gonna blame that on anything else but our responsibility as leaders. But there are a lot of issues that have hampered those things along the way. But I want to kind of recap the thought process because, uh, it's an investment that we all make. It's not just about tourists. Taxpayers locally are involved in that. But I wanted to kind of recap back through some possible projects for you to think about, to comment on us that I think are worthy of some conversation. Of course, you see right now up and down Frederica Road and on a lot of places. For me personally, I think that, uh, walking and pathways and wider sidewalks and repair sidewalks are a high priority. And we still have a lot of areas that could use some good walkways and paths. I mean, let's be honest. As everybody knows, the demographics have changed on the island. Still a lot of kids, they bike up and down Frederica Road. But there are a lot of people out walking. And what I noticed during COVID is the traffic on our sidewalks was very heavy and very crowded in the height. People were really getting outside to have some exercise. New sidewalks, for example, some subdivisions, nobody, I don't guess here, but a lot of people from, for example, like Sandcastle, if you don't recognize, you're looking at. Neighborhoods back in there are interested in having sidewalks out to connect. So those are some considerations that have been brought forth to us. Dunbar Creek Bridge, at our last meeting, you heard that, um, the state is going to move up the timetable to, uh, take that bridge and replace it within the next three years. And you heard my joke at the first meeting. If you didn't, the DOT wrote us a letter and said, "We're gonna close Sea Island Road for nine months while we replace the bridge." And I knew that guy had no clue about what was going on down here. But they've, with conversations, they've amended that plan. But that bridge will be replaced, and it's gonna be replaced back. And one of the things that we're trying to negotiate without, with the state is an additional space for bike path or walking. And, uh, we've met with the bike groups a lot, and I think they're very interested. A lot of people have called. They're interested in having a, a walking or a bike path along the Sea Island Road stretching from Eppworth up to the intersection there. For me, this is a project of potential interest. This is at Demery Park, if you don't recognize it. Since I've come on the commission, the previous commission had to tear down the bathroom buildings and a little pavilion there. So this is what, for the last two years, that people that used Demery Park have been using for the restroom. I think that's worthy of doing something about other than having portlets out there. That's a project for us to talk about and consider. Again, uh, walkways and paths are a big thing that I get calls a lot as an island commissioner. So, we're talking about the, uh, ditches also, but the bike paths coming up to Gascon Bluff now, trying to complete that trail across. So you basically can go from East Beach by bike or walking all the way over to the west side of the island. That needs more investment and money to complete that loop. Of course, been a lot of discussions about traffic. And, and I think everybody's pretty clear. They know where I stand on, on traffic. Uh, but it, it's been a slow-moving process, and that's ultimately the responsibility of the commission, is coming up with a plan that works. There's a lot of discussion about Sea Island, Frederica Road, and, and what's gonna be done there. And also the gateway entrance. Those concepts and those discussions and those financial numbers are still going on. And they're very restricted because of the size and space and legal entitlements and wetlands. But those discussions are going on. Whether they be on the SPOLOST, I don't know if we're gonna have the design ready in time to present that as a SPOLOST project. We're, we're working hard, but we're looking for your feedback. And drainage and piping. We did a great drainage project in the, um, Village, and that's, uh, added a great protection so that Strathers doesn't flood out with every rainstorm. We need more drainage products around the island. And of course, all over the mainland. We're a low-lying area, surrounded by water everywhere. So, you know, we need to look at the drainage projects there. Those are just things that we and our community are having. And I certainly open the floor to Commissioner O'Quinn and Rafousky to add in on anything on that.
Just to address a couple of things that have been said already about the 2016 SPOLOST, which was presented to the community by that commission. As I understand it, there was some discussion whether or not to have professional management or manage it all in-house with county staff. And I think a lot of the reasons you see the delays in the project is because the decision was made by that commission to not seek outside, uh, management firm to help manage the projects and, and maybe facilitate them in a faster manner. That was their decision. It's probably caused, uh, a longer lengthy term for getting the rest of these projects completed. One of the things that we are doing as a commission, this, uh, on Tuesday at our work session, we'll receive a presentation by GUD Construction, who is the SPOLOST Oversight, the East SPOLOST Oversight Group that has been working with the school board since 2007. And they, uh, manage most of their projects. We'll hear a presentation from them about them coming alongside us to potentially take over the rest of the projects that we have currently, but also to help us in developing a list of future SPOLOST projects with estimates and then possibly managing those projects if, if it were to pass. So, as a commission, I think we're actively looking for ways to bring new ideas to the table so that we can do the job better and, and provide some confidence to the public that we're gonna do everything possible to make sure that these projects are done well and done in a timely fashion and done, uh, within budget. And, uh, I think just acknowledging the fact that professional management is an important piece of it will be something that, that as this commission will point to is, hey, we've heard what you've said as a commu, as citizens, that the length of the 2016 SPOLOST projects took, took too long. The estimates were not always where they should have been. And hopefully, we'll solve some of that in that regard. In regards to the courthouse, we have, and we have been talking to some various consultants in regards to coming alongside us to look at our space needs in regards to what's going on in our judicial system and existing space that we have in the county where we can maybe move some things around, as well as come up with a couple of different concepts. Do we need to add on to the existing courthouse? Or is there a possibility to use an annex-type building next to the Pate Building? So we're, we're actively looking for solutions. But the fact is, juvenile court, um, is a problem because it is one of the, it's, it's a very small courtroom that's, uh, housed in the Office Park Building, where you also have the federal probation office. Seemed like there was something else there, too. But where you have a lot of drug courts there, where we have a lot of volatile situations that can occur and ju, with the folks that are waiting to go through juvenile court, as well as folks are waiting for drug court, it's, it's just a bad situation. So we do need to solve it as a community. So, uh, wherever we go, that, that needs to be taken care of one way or the other. And in regards to the SPOLOST, um, it's a vote. It is a tax. It's a tax that, uh, that we as citizens pay, but also our visitors pay. And studies have shown that it pays about fifty percent of, of everything collected. About fifty percent of that comes from those who visit this community. I mean, if you think about it, what, um, it's estimated that our tourism business brings in about $1.4 billion worth of economic impact, uh, each year. So if you, you do that at one percent, do the math. I mean, it clearly shows that they pay a significant amount of the SPOLOST that's collected, uh, for us as a community. It's a way to, for us to identify, yes, it's a tax, but to identify where those dollars will be spent. will be spent, it's a limited time period, whether it's three years, four years, five years, or whatever, six years, I think's the most you can go. And we get a vote on it, and we get to have a say and, and get to discuss where that money goes. So I hope that you'd consider it, at least keep an open mind as we go through this process if you're, if you're already against it. I think it's a very valuable asset for our community. We're fortunate to have one of the lower military rates throughout the state, or one of the few communities in the state that doesn't use SPOST as a way to pay for capital projects. As we all know, things are getting more and more expensive. Capital projects are certainly more and more expensive each year, and this is a good way to fund them and to use money from outside our community to help fund them. So thank you for, for listening to me.
Walter, I'd like for you to say if you would.
You know, I will, I will say one thing. On the Altama Corridor and the Sea Island to Frederica over to Demery, those are, there's something called Brunswick Area Transportation Study. And it's, that basically, those projects are on that study, and they don't cost the county anything, it's a state-funded thing. So those are being looked at. It's like for the trails. Really, other than that, they've covered it all. You know, I, I understand that, that there's a possibility, once, you know, if, without a SPOST, capital projects could go down to, we only have $2 million a year. Well, you know, if, like Altama needs to be paved, you, you just can't, paving, I'd have to ask Mr. Austin, but it's very expensive. You know, without SPOST, those projects have to pretty much end.
All right. Anybody else want to discuss or talk about SPOST projects?
Good evening. My name is Jane Fraser, and I was a member of the SPOST Oversight Committee. And I do want to say that during the four years that I attended the meetings, not a single commissioner came to oversee or hear what was going on with the projects. So, and I can tell you, for example, Canal Road, $48,000 change order in April. Were you aware of that? You just voted last week for another $40,000-plus change order. So this does, we don't have a lot of, of confidence in your ability to manage if you can't even show up at our oversight meetings. And of course, the change order after change order after change order, Dave sees me over there, but, you know, the company that does that probably should have been high bid. They came in at a low bid, and then they make 15 change orders. This is what the public is worried about. You all weren't there to oversee. You never bothered to come once to our meeting, and I worked three to four hours a week on the, on the spreadsheets on that. And, and I know where the, where the money's going, and it doesn't look good. So anyway, thank you very much. I don't think you need another layer of government to oversee when you can't even come with your oversight committee and pay attention to what we're doing. Thank you.
My name is Frank Booker. I'm a permanent resident of St. Simons, bought a home here in 1984, and have resided here permanently since 1998. Graduate of University of Georgia, so I'm not some Johnny-cum-lately. That you haven't finished the things that you said you would do on time. So if you haven't done it in the past, why should we trust you in the future? It comes down to that. Trust and credibility. And my friends, I'm sorry to tell you, you don't have it in my book. Thank you.
As most of you know, I've served as commissioner in the past, and I had the great privilege to preside over as chairman, two different SPOST. Tommy Clark, that's sitting down here, was part of that commission. I think the times were somewhat different in the availability to produce. I'm not involved, now I am, but the origination of 2016. But we have labor shortages, parts shortages, and prices. But all of the SPOST, you gather that money, if you don't bond it out, to begin projects. You have to wait for that money to comes in. And when you're talking about road projects, there are roads in places to be built that are not owned by the county, and it is a difficult process to purchase the land, negotiate out the land, and delay it. So I'm not offering up excuses, but there are some real realities to cross the hurdle the way SPOST is done. Lost, as you know, is a different situation. That money comes in, and it comes in on general fund, and then the county, as directed by the commission, diverts those funds to whatever it needs. But to get capital projects done of any size and substance, you got to have a cash flow if you're going to bond it out, or you got to have a SPOST to make the projects done. And that's what we're here to try to put together. Now, I agree that a lot of projects that have been talked about in the last SPOST, and there's a lot of getting ready that needs to be done. We accept responsibility about that, I do, too, and we got to get in gear and kick ass to get the job done. But that's what we're, this group is, I feel very confident in working with, is committed to doing, and I see that progress. This SPOST is laid out in a proper timetable, rather in a rush that the last one was done. So I hope you'll consider to tune in. We will have another town hall meeting at Oglethorpe Elementary School on February the 24th. I've tried to do one mid-island. This is south end island, and we tried to do one up at the north end of the island, McGolden Hall's Presbyterian Church, didn't have the dates available that we needed, so Oglethorpe and the Board of Education stepped up and allowed us to do that. So I'll be at 6:45, and I don't know how that one will go. It'll be a combination of SPOST, probably, and comments. So any last comments on SPOST?
Well, I've waited for someone else to come up. I apologize for showing up again. But you've made several comments that I wish you would consider alternatives, one of which you talk about the courthouse. I've not heard anyone talk about something other than building something new. You've got all kinds of the old historic homes down there that you could buy and renovate, and if you moved the district attorney across the street, and, and that opens up the entire third floor for, for your juvenile court, there's probably 100,000 square feet at the mall, and you could have an auxiliary city management group out there and, and expand your courtroom needs there. Instead of spending $30 million of the taxpayers' money, you can spend $7 or $8 million and accomplish the same thing with structures that already exist. And, and so I, I hope that there will be an exhaustive study of the, the space needs and where you're going to achieve the space. And with regard to Commissioner Quinn, your statement about 50%, there was a study done, there's never been a study done. There is no ability to quantify where the tax money is coming from because they can't match the ZIP code to the purchaser. It doesn't occur at the point of sale. The state revenue commissioner does not have that information. So anything that you ever hear is nothing more than an estimate. And, and so I would caution you against citing any studies because there is none. This authoritative.
Well, I mean, there, there have been studies, there have been examinations of the, of the, the tax in the, previously, Mr. Kilgore, and the fact that the $1.4 billion in economic activity that's generated by tourism speaks specifically to the amount of money that we collect as a community in lost, as well as what would be with SPOST, which is well over half the total amount. So, you know, we can certainly debate about it. I, I'll be more than happy to listen to your points about it, but to say it's 25% what you've said in the past, I think is woefully wrong.
It's incredible that you say 50%.
No, it's not, it's just as incredible. Okay.
How many washing machines in cars are bought by tourists?
That I don't know, but I do know that there's 1.1.4 billion dollars in economic impact to our community, and you do that at 1% of 1.4 billion, that shows you where you come from.
What's the impact that the residents spend?
Well, the residents spend a lot of that money. We spend about half of it. So half of it comes from out of, out of, out of the county, and half of it comes from in the county.
You don't know that.
Well, I believe, I believe that I can look at the information and surmise where most of this revenue comes from, so.
Can you look at and surmise something different?
Well, that's, that's your, that's right. You're right.
Okay. All right. What time are we at?
7:30.
All right. So we'll open the floor for general discussion and questions. Now, I know that some of you spoke at Seapalm's meeting, and I'm not going to defer you away, but I want to give others that haven't had a chance to speak, to come up and ask about or make comments on any issues for primarily St. Simons or other county issues, if you'd like.
No, ma'am, I said that you spoke at Seapalm's, I want to give others a chance while we have the time. Not, not cutting you out at all.
My name is Nathan Russo, and I live on the south end of the island here. And I've been here for about 30 years. And everybody who listens to whatever your news station is here on the island on TV, they know about this trillion-dollar-plus infrastructure bill that was passed by our federal government. What are you guys doing on the commission, setting up a committee to talk to the people in our state, in our state legislature about what kind of money are you going to get for infrastructure for our county? Do you, do you have people already set up that are up there all the time or talking on the phone to our state legislatures?
Well, is, is what's been explained to us so far is that a lot of the guidelines on that money has not, have not been released by the federal government. I had the opportunity to speak to Representative Buddy Carter here recently, and it was his understanding that most of that money will be funneled through the states through the DOT, and that the DOT would probably, at first, address a lot of the projects they have in their pipeline. And then what will, meaning they have a lot of projects on their, in their books that they'll probably use a lot of that money towards. In regards to the local, local governments, we're still waiting for exact information, instructions, what we can and cannot present as projects under that funding, but yes, that is certainly a possibility.
Are you talking to our state senator from this area and our state?
I know we've.
House people?
We are talking to the state house. I've not talked to Ms. McNeil recently about it, but I did talk to Mr. Buddy Carter about it, who is our U.S. Congressman.
Yeah, but the money is going to be going to the state, as, as well as I understand it.
Right.
And they're going to decide where in the state this money gets used.
And most of it is going to be.
Do we have somebody here from our county lobbying up there all the time, or at least making a squeaky wheel so that we're going to get some of that money?
Yeah, and that's our job, our legislators, legislators to do that, as well as our county to be in, in touch with them, and, and we'll certainly do that. We're, we're waiting for instructions, but we, we do talk to the state regularly about what we can and can't do in regards to road projects, but DOT is, is its own entity. And as much as we like to say we can try to lobby them, they'll do what they want to do, as we've found out in the past.
And, and one last thing, even though we're off of SPOST, one of the things I hear from many people that I talk to is they're saying that things have been done in like a haphazard way. You have a project here, you have a project there. When you do the roundabouts, why don't you think about roundabouts for the whole county? When you do bike paths, think about bike paths for the whole county. Instead of like, say, well, Frederica's going to get this, and Altama's going to get that, maybe people would have more confidence in, in your commission if, when you make up these SPOST projects, if, if you did them, instead of doing them piecemeal, maybe don't do so many, but do everything at the same time for the whole county.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, the other district commissioners are here tonight, and they've been holding their town hall meetings. Also, Commissioner Tosson and Brunson are here, and Commissioner Booker. So this meeting is for St. Simons, for District Two, primarily to hear from the people that live here on the island and the projects that they would like to see improved or invested in. But those conversations are going on countywide, all over, and you, you will see the coalescing of those projects within the next 30 days, based on the feedback that you've been providing, and hopefully will continue. One of the things I did do was leave cards and pencils out back and a red bucket. Any comment that you want to have or suggestions, not everybody likes to come up and speak, I understand that. My phone numbers and cell are readily available as your commissioner. I also post and exchange on all social media, try to keep you informed of what's going on, listen to your comments, reply back, whether you like the replies or not, with, try to present back factual information. That's my primary job, is to provide you the facts, not just my personal opinion. So, but anyway, there's cards and pencils and a bucket back there. Ma'am, did you want to come up and speak then? Sir?
It's a little difficult to get out of here. I would like to ask if you could give a brief update on the short-term rental situation, the ordinance that the county has in place, its implementation, and the success, or lack of thereof, of giving the short-term rentals revenue.
Sure, I'd be glad to. Dave, do you want to speak to that first? Okay, well, as you know, short-term rental was a licensing structure that the county previous commission put together, and a lot of partners from in the community worked to create that licensing structure. And it came legally into effect officially October the 1st. We know that we have about 1,400-plus licensed on the island, short-term rentals. And that fee that they pay and the bed tax that they raise has brought in a couple million dollars this year halfway through the budget year, so it's big. I know, as I'm in the tourism business, so I know from talking with the people that come on my boats and trolleys, that it's a huge business here. And I contribute that to a lot of the traffic congestion that we have. And of course, in the conversations with that, I listened in on the committee's meeting the other day, and that's coming along. It's a new program, it's kind of hard to track, especially with your national companies. You can audit local companies and what they're doing in their licenses. And of course, we have a company that's working that basically patrols the media waves to determine who's advertising for short. I get for supporting short-term rentals that's driving the real estate along. On the other side, or the neighborhoods, people bought for neighborhoods, and each week they've got a new pack of people across the street that don't keep the same quiet bedtimes, shooting off fireworks. And so we're getting a lot of complaints. So we're going to ride along here a little bit longer and see where we need to tweak it and what needs to happen. It has produced a windfall this year because of the economy. It's also produced a windfall, not just in rental income, but in investments in housing. Architects tell me that they're getting requests to build houses with more bedrooms. And, and I know that that's, you know, again, I take them out on my boat, and there's 12 people in there, and I say, where are y'all staying? Well, they're not in a hotel, they're renting a house all over the island. And I said, well, how are y'all all sleeping in that house? Well, you know, on the floors, on the sofas, we're all family here together. So, you know, there's a lot still to tweak it enforcement, but it's good program and it's moving along. Anybody else or other questions you'd like? Come up front. You can come on down, sir, if you'd like. Okay. Well, please come down. We've got a few more minutes here.
My name is Gretchen Nagels, and my husband and I do have a short-term rental in front of our house, and we're very pleased with lodging revs so far. We have had issues. We are in contact with code enforcement, and we are looking to see exactly where this lands. So I would be interested, and there's probably a lot of people in this room. So I would be interested, and there's probably a lot of people in this room that are in close proximity to short-term rentals, to know what is happening on the lodging revs, code enforcement side with regard to complaints, and how they are being handled and what is happening. Because if, if there is a complaint, there could potentially be some type of violation, which could be a fine, a suspension, or possibly having their certificate revoked. So it's, it, it again goes to people that are coming to the island. And quite honestly, my husband and I, as residents of St. Simons, granted only for a short time, for three years, we retired here, although we've had a part-time property for eight. But we consider it an invasion, and it is getting worse. I'm on South Island. We're right next to Hazel's Cafe. Someone said Saltair. I'm, I'm right across the street from you. So it would be nice to hear and to be able to have access to the, to the feedback and what's happening with short-term rentals.
Okay. We'll do that. I listened in to the discussion with the committee the other day. And, you know, again, now that it's officially licensed, we're getting more organized. I'll try to have those numbers at the Oglethorpe Town, School Town Hall Meeting.
Good. Thank you. We'll be there.
Thank you.
Good reason to be there.
Yes.
Thank you for being here tonight. My name's Neil Backus, and I just wanted to follow on the, the comments about the, the bed tax situation as it applies to SPOS. And I think that's a, that's a very good vein to follow up with the commissioners. Cap, if we're really interested in limiting growth, it appears that the tourists coming on in the short-term rentals have a, have a pretty good supply of money coming on the island. They don't mind the increased cost for the, the rentals. I think rentals go up every year. There's more rentals here. They don't mind paying the restaurant prices. Instead of the SPOS that affects every citizen, and I've seen it done in other cities, can we target more of a tourist tax? Bed taxes, restaurant taxes, some way to specifically target entertainment and so forth that really hits the visitors to the island without penalizing, you know, the working families and retirees and everyone else we have on the island. We live in the heart of the village. We see the mayhem that's go on all the time, every night, even during the wintertime. So it's getting to be a real problem. You guys are very gracious to listen to our complaints and, and take care of a lot of the noise issues and the craziness that goes on. I think if the vision is to, to create an island atmosphere of neighborhoods and community, you've really gotta focus on reining in the amount of people that come into the island and are able to rent and, and limit that, not only for the roadways, but just for the peace of mind of the, your, your community here.
Well, those discussions, as our community, need to continue on because the dynamics are changing. As you said, we just reported to you, a couple million have come in mid-year.
Yeah.
It's a, a growth on the island for the last 12 years and in the industry that's outpacing the hotel industry. So it's not something that's gonna slow down unless we, as a community, wanna break it.
Right.
And slow it down. I wanna say too, also, I didn't put up the numbers, but a SPOS, just so we know about what bed tax do and SPOS do. And these dynamics are changing, and we need to have the conversations. But a SPOS, five-year SPOS brings in to the county after the split with the city and other agencies, could be about 82 million, depending on the economy, more or less. For big capital projects, SPOS is a good, good answer. But we're here to listen and continue the dialogue, including you.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right. Ma'am, did you wanna come down?
Someone will raise their hand.
Okay. If you want, if there's anybody else who wanna speak, please come down to the microphone because we have this televised live so people can hear. Many people, I believe, are sitting at home that wanna hear what's going on. Please-
We're done talking about SPOS?
Yes, sir.
Just general, can you give an update on the museum project in the village? I know there was a big rush to tear down the structures there, and now we have a nice little grass plot. Do you know what's going on with that piece of property?
I, I mean, it was privately, you know, bought by Mr. Insuits or his, his company, and I'm understanding is, is they're on, kinda on a standstill right now. So I don't have any further information. That's up to them.
Only thing I do know is that the retailer that was in the building was having a difficult time trying to find another location, and they, part of, I know part of the delay has been that they've wanted to provide that retailer an opportunity to find a suitable location. But other than that, we hadn't heard anything that I know of, Walter.
I asked a question the other day to move over to Seattle, and they don't know, they don't have an answer. They said that's a distraction.
Okay. All right, ma'am. We'll let you close it out. How about that?
I know you're sick of hearing from me, but I'm very passionate about this. I'm here to speak about the dog tethering ordinance here. I'm gonna shorten my remarks. I prepared five minutes, but I know I only have three, so I'm doing, gonna do my best. I just wanna say, let's call a spade a spade. If someone ties a dog to a tree on a six-foot tether and keeps the dog there for its entire life, that is definitely animal cruelty. I don't see how that's even debatable. And that's what our humane tethering ordinance allows. There is a ton of research and statistics that show the link between cruelty to animals and violence towards humans, so much so that the FBI has, for more than five years, been tracking crimes against animals in the same way it tracks other serious crimes like robbery and murder. Tying a dog to a tree for its whole life on a six-foot tether is cruelty to animals. Any human with a soul would agree with that. Dog fighters would disagree because that's how they keep their dogs when they're not having them rip each other apart for the viewing pleasure of the monsters who watch the fights. But surely, we aren't trying to make things easier for dog fighters here in Glenn County, right? In order for laws to be enforceable, they must be specific. They must spell out exactly what constitutes a violation of it. For example, the Glenn County ordinance says an animal must, quote, "have continuous access to food, water, and appropriate shelter." But it doesn't define any of those terms. So if someone were to call animal control because a dog was tied to a tree on a six-foot leash but had dirty water in its bowl, there would be nothing animal control could do because that technically would meet the requirements of the law. Same thing if there were ants crawling in the food, or if it was a cardboard box that that was the shelter for the dog. Nothing animal control could do. I've provided you guys with examples of Georgia tethering statutes that adequately define all of these terms and would vastly improve our statute. Just this month, Floyd County in Georgia enacted a no tethering ordinance. Floyd County has a lot of the same statistics, demographics as Glenn County. I won't go through them all because I don't have time. But I think what it shows is that we can do what they did. Yes, it would take effort, and yes, some people won't like it. Some people don't like laws banning drug dealing, prostitution, domestic violence, you name it. For every good law on the books, there are people who are against it. But that doesn't mean we don't write good, decent laws that protect living beings just because of the few who don't wanna meet the standards that society has deemed acceptable. I have to believe that the intent behind the current ordinance, named the humane tethering ordinance, was to create a better and humane scenario for dogs. It didn't do that, but we can fix it. Let's fix it. I'm happy to provide the new tethering ordinance in Floyd County to the commissioners for their review, if that would be helpful. Despite the fact that I'm the one standing up here addressing you repeatedly and writing to the newspaper, reaching out to anyone who will listen, there are thousands of constituents who agree with me and are outraged that the current law is what it is, and perhaps even more so that it's been brought to your attention on numerous occasions and seemingly nothing is happening. This issue is not just going to go away. Please act now and change the current law to make it truly humane. And if there's anyone here who agrees with me and hasn't had a chance to sign my petition, please come see me at the end. I would love for you to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? We're gonna close it. I wanna thank you all for coming. We did have this televised. I hope successfully, the one at Seapalm's didn't seem to go so well televised. We will have our next town hall at Oglethorpe Elementary School, February 24th, at 6:45 p.m. We'll make SPOS the primary, but we'll also have a more detailed report on short-term rentals. If there are other subjects that you want information about, you can call me, you can email me. My fellow commissioners know I answer every email as soon as I can, no matter what some people say. Most of that's a lot late at night because I work all day, work into the evening, and I sit down to my county stuff at 10:00 at night. And they, they know they get all that late-night emails, and staff too, right there. So thank you very much. Y'all have a great weekend, and we'll look forward to seeing you again. Come up and talk to us. Let us know anything. We're here to serve you. (applause)